I call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, I want to welcome everyone who's here tonight and everyone who's watching us at home. And briefly, I will go over our agenda for this evening. First, we have the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from the August 26th meeting. And then we'll have a public hearing for a conditional use permit for Hertz Rent-A-Car. Then we'll move on to the Blue Springs Christian Church. And we'll have two items there: a public hearing on a rezoning and a preliminary plat. And then two items for Brookwood Village Town Homes, which is a preliminary and final plat. That being said, we'll move to our consent agenda, which is the minutes from August 26th. Do I have any discussion and/or motion? Have a motion to accept?
Second.
In a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. And we move on to -- let me remind everybody real quickly here how our public hearings work. I will open the public hearing and call for exhibits from the city attorney. And then we'll have staff comments. The applicant will make their presentation. We'll hear witnesses in favor of the petition, then witnesses opposed to the petition. I'll bring it back up here for discussion on the record, and then I'll close it. And then after that, we'll have further discussion and motions and a vote. That being said, this is the public hearing on Hertz Rent-A-Car for conditional use. And I open the public hearing. Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, the city has eight exhibits. Number one is a staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. Given before this evening is a request to have a conditional use permit approved for vehicle rental establishment at 2009 Northwest 7 Highway. You can see in the map on the screen. This is for Hertz Local Edition. Per UDC, a conditional use permit is required for vehicle rental establishments. And they're requesting to be located at the north tenant space of the shopping center at Jessica's Corner. PUD is also known as Kingpin, which is right in front of, or to the east of Lunar Bowl, and currently includes, I believe, China One and Pizza Street. So they're in the north end of that. It has, in the past, been sport clips and similar uses. So it is a change of use in that regard. Shopping Center currently has a shared parking lot with 80 parking spaces. For this use, they're looking to designate 15 parking spaces. Jump to the -- sorry, jump to the site map from the applicant here. If I can find that easily, there we go. It's probably the best depiction to look at. 7 Highway is here on the right. North is to the top. The hash area is what's representing the 15 spaces. Eight on the west side, just north of the proposed Hertz. And then seven again to the north. This X here is because the landscape island is not present here. There's a portion of it. There's one here, and there's also one in this area. So this is -- they used the original layout from that Kingpin PUD. But again, there's been some modifications to the location of these parking lot islands. So ignore this one, and there's also one out here. Employees or visitors will park in a shared parking lot of the center. So the hashed area is designated for storage of the rental vehicles, and then the rest will be, again, shared with the other two tenants. Staff does recommend approval of the project with three conditions. Do you want to highlight some of the standards specific to vehicle rental establishment? Again, note of the parking spaces here. It has been noted that Hertz may have up to 100 vehicles in their fleet. Obviously, there's only room as designated for 15. But again, there may be that rotation of various vehicles at any given time. Landscaping, as is noted, there's some modifications to that original PUD plan several years ago. Again, in conformance with the overall landscaping plan, but just kind of relocation of some of those landscape islands. Per the conditions with the conditional use permit for vehicle rental establishment, they do need to provide an updated landscape plan. So it's not as though there isn't one currently. They just need to provide an updated one. And there is some shortage, again, just through kind of attrition, just over the years. Plant units have died. Things have been moved around. So they just need to provide staff with an updated plan, primarily in this areas where we're noting there's a lack of some landscaping. And there's some, again, just sporadic gaps throughout some of this buffer area. So Hertz is aware of the need to provide an updated landscape plan. And again, staff is confident that they'll be able to, again, kind of fill in the gaps with that. Maintenance is another thing that does need to be considered with vehicle rental establishments. No maintenance is proposed to be done on-site. Only onsite activity will be vacuuming of vehicles. Staff does recommend that they -- that Hertz designate a space specifically for that so that there can be, again, any issues with screening or noise, things of that sort, can be mitigated based on identifying where that space should be limited to. They do meet all the other requirements per the code with vehicle rental establishments. And with that, again, there are -- staff did include the section of the code for your information, be on page six of eight, that highlights the different requirements specific to vehicle rental establishment here. So with that, again, there are three proposed conditions referencing that landscape plan -- plan, excuse me, vacuuming parking space designation, and then again, just acknowledgement of any permitting for signage as they move forward. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? I guess not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Would the applicant like to come forward and make their presentation? And you will need to be sworn in. Is the applicant here? Apparently, we don't have an applicant. Okay. With that being said, I guess I will ask if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Or anybody who'd like to speak against it? Seeing none, I will bring it up here for discussion. Is there any discussion on the record?
Well, I guess I was saving a question for the applicant, but maybe staff would know. In the presentation, Mr. Allen talked about rotating vehicles. The vehicles being brought in, will they be brought in using a trailer or individually? Or, you know, where is the storage of the other vehicles as in relationship to this facility?
Very good question, Chris Trosen. I wish the applicant were here. They were obviously notified several times of the meeting, both the owner and the operator. Based, again, on operation of the last vehicle rental establishment, Enterprise, it's just an understanding that vehicles would kind of be returned, picked up by customers, and through that rotation, they have essentially 100 vehicles kind of in their quote "fleet" that are assigned to this particular location. But I don't believe there'll be trucks and semis, as far as I understand it. But again, I would have to defer to the applicant to confirm that.
Well, I do have a --
Ms. Banks?
I do have a question also. You were talking about vacuuming, but are they planning on cleaning the cars there and washing the cars as well? Or do you have any idea?
No. No, they are not planning to do that. One can presume with the approval of Mirror Image Car Wash immediately to the north on the project, on the PUD site, as well as the location of two other car washes immediately south, that they have opportunity to do some more of the washing, particularly not on the property, but immediately off-site. Washing is not a part of their operations, as it was with Enterprise. They do a little bit more full-service detailing on-site with that operation. This one, just because the tenant space is essentially just an office and kind of retail customer walk-up, so really is, again, vacuuming is going to be in a parking space. There's no designated bays or anything of that sort. So no, there'd be no washing on-site.
So without -- able to talk to the applicant, they could actually almost vacuum at the other sites too? Or they -- did they tell you they wanted to vacuum here?
They specifically did note they would be doing vacuuming on-site. So I don't believe, you know, if they're just doing the interior cleaning, again, vacuuming is kind of a catch-all for interior cleaning, but exterior cleaning would not occur on-site. You know, again, you could presume indexing windows may occur, but actual full washing or detailing exterior would not occur on-site.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Yes?
Is the -- is their office going to be part of that existing shopping center?
Yes, it is an existing tenant space.
So they're just going to remodel it?
That's correct. It would be remodeling the existing tenant space, again, from previous tenants. I think most recent, I don't believe -- I'm not sure if it was a sport clip.
It was a sports clip at one time. I'm not sure if that's the most recent one.
Right, it was at one time. But yeah, so essentially, the remodeling interior simply for, again, basic retail use. Office, you know, office space inside as well as a retail counter.
Any further questions?
I have another question.
Mr. Trosen.
Since the staff report talks about the designated 15 parking spaces, and it appears that the applicant's in agreement to that, why isn't there a condition as far as that there can be no more than 15 idle vehicles on the site?
That's certainly an option for consideration, to include that condition, and staff would not be opposed to that. I'm not specifically sure why we did not provide that as a condition, but it's certainly an option.
Well, I mean, I don't want to create an administrative headache as far as having to go up there and count, you know, if there's 16 or 17.
Right, right.
I just didn't know if that was the reason why.
That was, in part, the case, because there may be some overlap as vehicles come in and vehicles leave, and then try to determine whether, you know, there are customer vehicles there, and they're swapping, you know, the customer parking, visitor parking, staff parking. But again, it's certainly, if the Planning Commission's interested in providing kind of a maximum cap somewhere in that 15-spot space range, I'm sure the applicant wouldn't be opposed to that.
It would also give us a leg if there were complaints from the other tenants or something like that about too many cars being left on-site or something.
That's a very good point.
Not so much that we'd have to enforce it all the time, but if there was a complaint, we'd have something to go back and say, "Look, this is what we told you, and you're not complying," so.
And again, yeah, it's certainly an option, either to have, for example, a vacuuming space within the 15 or in addition to that. Again, if the applicant were here, we could maybe get some clarification on that. But staff was assuming the vacuuming space would be a part of the 15, but there's some leeway there.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back up here for further discussion and/or motions.
Well, Mr. Chairman, it appears that we have some questions that would -- that it would be helpful if the applicant was present.
We do have the option of not making a decision on this until the applicant actually is here to make a presentation. I mean, that could be the motion, is that we postpone a decision until we hear from the applicant.
You could hold it to the end in case they show up and do it then. And then if they don't show up, you know, continue it. Or you can continue it right now, either way.
I mean, I'd do it till the end. Sure, wait.
I would need a motion to that effect?
Yeah, you need a motion for either.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Trosen.
I move at this time that we hold CUP-8-13-4058 to the end of tonight's agenda.
Second. Is that the applicant right there?
No.
Well, I have a motion in a second with the pres -- what? Yeah, would you like to withdraw the motion?
I withdraw the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Are you with Hertz?
Yes, sorry.
And we'll need to reopen the public hearing to have that testimony. Reopen the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward. We have some questions for you.
Sure.
If you'd like to make a presentation before we ask our questions, or?
No, that's fine.
Okay. You'll have to be sworn in.
Thank you, Andrew Haverkamp. May I spell that correctly? H-A-F-Z-N-F-R-K-E-R-K-A-M-P. And we're at, I'll give you, 7271 West 105th Street, Oklahoma Park, Kansas.
Thank you.
Apologize if I delayed you folks. Appreciate your time. I'm here with Hertz, and we're just looking to open a new location at 2009 Highway 7. And we're looking to get a conditional use permit from the city.
Mr. Trosen, would you like to ask your questions?
One of the questions that I had, sir, was there was a reference in the staff report of designated parking spaces for 15 idle vehicles.
Yes, sir.
And so, but there was no condition associated to those 15 idle parking spaces. Would you, as the applicant, be opposed that a condition be added that you would have no more than the 15 idle vehicles at that location at any one time?
I wouldn't be opposed to that. In fact, that works for us for two reasons. One, the landlord only allowed us 13 or 15 parking spaces, so we would kind of be stuck anyway if we went over our allotment, because the restaurants and stuff have their allotted amount of parking spaces that we don't want to get involved with. Secondly, we have a shared fleet, not only citywide but nationally, and transporters. So if I ever have more than 15 cars idle at any given time, that's too many. We don't need them, so we would have them moved. So they're not sitting. If they're sitting, they're not making any money. So we would want to move them to a location that could rent them. So yes, we could agree to that.
And then my second question was, if you do not have 15 cars there and you want to bring more cars on-site, how are they transported then on-site?
Just be driven by part-time transporters.
Thank you.
Ms. Banks, did you have another question to go on with that?
Yes, I had asked about your vacuuming. You're not planning on washing cars there, or washing cars there.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a designated area where you're going to be cleaning out the cars?
We would like to have one parking space or one spot on the lot where we'll use a shop vac. Usually, we just do the inside of the car, right there on-site, shop vac, wipe down the dash in the windows. All of the car washing is done off-site. We usually purchase washes or something from a car wash that's existing.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant that I've forgotten about here? Okay, any other discussion now that we're back on the record? Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I would ask if there's anybody who'd like to speak in favor or against this petition now that we've heard this testimony? And I'll close the public hearing again, and bring it back up here now for a motion and/or discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Trosen.
I would like to recommend approval of CUP-8-13-4058, subject to the three conditions of the staff report, and adding an additional fourth condition that states the applicant shall have no more than 15 idle vehicles on-site at any one time.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Bottalata?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Trosen?
Aye.
Chairman Phillips?
Aye. And that conditional use has been approved. Thank you. And now we move on to the Blue Springs Christian Church. We have two items. We have a public hearing for the rezoning, and then we'll also have a preliminary plat. We'll hear both of those together and then vote on them separately. I will now open the public hearing for the rezoning. Mr. McDonald?
Mr. Chairman, the city has eight exhibits for the public hearing rezoning. Number one is a staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the newspaper. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Hawley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. Again, before you tonight is a request to rezone property. The rezoning is to change the zoning from AG, which is county agricultural, to GB, which is general business. Also before you is the preliminary plat, and we'll talk about that a little bit after we talk about the rezoning. Property, as you can see on the location map, is located on the west side of Southwest 7 Highway. It's about 2,000 feet north of Southwest Wyatt Road. It consists of approximately 19.93 acres, and again, current zoning is county agricultural. Looking at the page three of four of the staff report, you can see that the applicant has also submitted a request to annex this particular property. And the first public hearing, or the public hearing for the annexation, went before the city council on September 4th of this year. And the city council will have the second reading and the ordinance on October 7th, and that will run concurrently with this rezoning request. Comprehensive plan for this particular property, the eastern portion, about half of the property, the comprehensive plan calls for general commercial, and the western portion is low-density residential. Given the nature of the use on this property, and the church is, of course, already established use on the property, and given the size, it really, again, similar to the church that came before you on the corner of Southwest Wyatt and Southwest 7 Highway. It's a fairly large facility, and it really falls more in line with a general business type of zoning than it does with the single-family residential. So that is the request for the zoning. And with that, if there are any questions on the zoning, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, I will move forward with the preliminary plat.
Are there any questions for staff about the rezoning? Mr. Hawley, do we need any kind of condition or anything in here that this is all contingent on the annexation?
No, the zoning, when it goes before the city council, the zoning will be placed after the annexation, so that if the annexation is approved by the city council, they will move forward to the zoning. If the annexation is not approved by the city council, they simply won't hear the rezoning.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, let's move on to the preliminary plat.
Again, obviously, the preliminary plat is for a single parcel, and it is the same parcel, so it's this site again. We'll move to take a look at the preliminary plat diagram. A couple, first, I would note with the preliminary plat that if the Planning Commission so chooses to approve this request, the Planning Commission is the final authority without appeal to approve this. So it will have to be conditioned upon this plat not being effective until after the annexation is approved, assuming that it is approved by the city council. That's reflected in condition number one of the preliminary plat report, and it's also noted on page three of four of the preliminary plat report. Primary reason for the annexation at this time is to allow the church to connect to the sanitary sewer. They currently are on a private system of their own, and in order to do any expansions in the future, they already see the need to be on the sanitary sewer. So you'll note on page four of four that a 25-foot utility easement is located adjacent to the highway, but more pertinent to this, the applicant will need to provide an easement that's acceptable to the Public Works Department for the extension of the sanitary sewer main and the installation of the associated manhole. As is typical with plating, we look at all public improvements, and there is no sidewalk connected to, or there is no sidewalk along the frontage of this particular piece of ground. And so therefore, that too will be a condition of the approval, that they install a 5-foot sidewalk or escrow for that sidewalk. We've talked with them about the escrow and the installation. I'll let them address which route they intend to go. I know there is some concern with the fact that there is no sidewalk on properties to the north or to the south of them. And if we go back to the site plan real quick, the Blue Springs Christian Church owns this property that is labeled MF14 and GB. That is their property currently undeveloped. As you'll remember, I think it was the Blue Springs, I want to say Baptist Church, I hope that's the correct denomination, purchased this property down here. And as you will recall, their intent is to develop the front, or what I will say, the Wyatt Road frontage in this area, but leave this area for a second phase. So the Blue Springs Baptist Church is, will be installing sidewalk along Southwest Wyatt Road and along this portion, the front portion here, if I can call it that, leaving a space between here and here that will not have sidewalk improved at this time. This particular parcel here, zoned residential estate, has no sidewalk. So perhaps if they decide to escrow and wait for sidewalk to come on either side of them, I'm not sure when that timing will occur, but I think they can talk to you a little bit about their desire for that. With that, staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the three conditions all discussed in the staff report. And I will stand for any questions.
I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Burnley.
Mr. Hawley, my question is on number three of page four of four. Under the staff recommendations, should that be the west side of the Southwest 7 Highway, not the, or should that be the east side instead of the west side of the property for that sidewalk?
It should be the west side of Southwest 7 Highway. And I think the way that that condition reads now is the applicant or property owner is required to install a 5-foot sidewalk along the west side of the, yeah, Southwest 7. It is the east side of their property. That's true.
Are there any other questions for staff on the preliminary plat?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hawley, just so that we're all clear here, because this is a existing property, already developed property, let's say, we're not requiring them to come up to any kind of current codes other than the sidewalk and?
And then, of course, they'll have to meet the codes for the installation of the sanitary sewer extension as well as the manhole. But now, when you annex property into the city of Blue Springs, you bring the property in, and those things that are not compliant with our current code come in as legal nonconforming. So in this particular case, one that I think everybody is aware of, of course, is their sign. They have a pole sign with a reader board out there. That will be a nonconforming sign. They will be able to maintain that sign. They would not be able to enlarge that sign. If they were wanting to do something like that, they would have to bring the sign into conformance with our current code. I understand that the reader board, as it is now, could meet our current code if it weren't on a pole. So they could keep the reader board. It would just have to come down to the monument. As far as their landscaping goes, they are short of landscaping along Highway 7. There's a buffer that would be required there. It's a 25-foot buffer. They do not have plant units.
They do not have plant units there, but the rest of their site is, appears to be, just from our, our walk with them through their site, appears to be compliant with the buffers on the north, south, and certainly on the west side. The parking lot and their landscaping in the parking lot looks to be compliant. Again, we did not count units. We just did a visual inspection. If it isn't compliant, it's pretty darn close. And what would trigger having them to bring us up?
If they did an addition that was in excess of 25% of the current buildings, then they're required to bring the entire site into compliance.
Well, that's a pretty large building. Is there, is there a second, a square footage condition or anything like that, or is it just the 25%?
By the code, it's just the 25%, if you exceed 25%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holly.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward? And you will need to be sworn in for the rezoning.
Thank you so much for discussing this case, to be the truth, something got. Please, your name and address.
It's Matt Slisch, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. Good evening. I come to you on behalf of the Blue Springs Christian Church for pretty much every reason that Jim Holly has stated. We're basically just trying to take an existing septic system, take it off of the septic and put it up, and put it onto a gravity sewer system. In this process, we've, like I said, got the preliminary hearing on the annexation done and approved, or not approved, but I guess okay to move on. And basically, as I say, we're, we're prepared to submit the sanitary sewer plans hopefully this fall yet to hopefully get that installation started as soon as approvals can happen. As far as the sidewalk goes, they are prepared to install the sidewalks at any time. So our intent is that if we could get that done before the October meeting to avoid the weather, we'd be happy to do it. If we have to wait till after the October meeting, it doesn't matter, but they intend to install them to get that section of sidewalk done in and out of the way. So I think I'm available for any other questions you might have. I don't think anything else you asked, I remember.
Are there any questions for the applicant? I guess not.
All right.
Thank you very much. Okay. And this concerning only the rezoning and not the preliminary plat. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Or is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak against the petition? And seeing none, I'll bring it up here for discussion on the record. And seeing none, I close the public hearing, and we will now have a final discussion and a motion on the rezoning, please.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Banks.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Blue Springs Church rezoning, RZ-8-13-4069.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Commissioner McCall?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartolata?
Aye.
Commissioner Duan?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Trozen?
Aye.
Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Chairman Billups?
Aye. And that motion has been approved, and we will recommend approval to the City Council. And we now move to the preliminary plat. Any discussion and/or motions? Ms. Banks.
Mr. Chair?
I could see you wanted to do it.
Well, get started on some. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Blue Springs Christian Church preliminary plat, PP-8-13-4068, with the three staff conditions.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that preliminary plat has been approved. And we will now move on to items number five and six, which is a preliminary and final plat on the Brookwood Village Town Homes. Mr. Allen?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. For you this evening, last gen items, a request from applicant to preliminary plat and final plat, Brookwood Village Town Homes, on about 1.7 acre lot at southeast corner of Artemis Road and Sunnyside School Road. This was last before you, at your last meeting, actually, for site plan design review at the August 26th Plan Commission meeting. Prior to that, rezoning request at the, before Plan Commission in, on July 22nd, which was approved by City Council August 5th. So the applicant is going step by step through the process to get all the preliminary approvals in order to bring this project out of the ground. So the next step after, again, assuming whatever recommendation goes before the City Council, they will review that on October 7th for the final plat. And then, should that be approved, then only building permits would be required, and you can start seeing that project come out of the ground. So again, just as a quick refresher, applicant is proposing to develop 16 units on 1.7 acres. So it's four units per building for four buildings total. Just a number of items I did want to highlight from the staff report for your consideration. And that is, began page five of six, actually, just moving into the final plat in particular. Looking at easements, for example, working with city engineer, looking at easement in particular for drainage related to the remainder of Brookwood Village. So there would need to be drainage easement associated with the detention basin. And then, along with that, sidewalks there, five-foot sidewalks are required along 5th Street and Sunnyside School Road. Required sidewalks must be installed or financial guarantee submitted prior to City Council approval of file plat. Again, the applicant does have a fair amount of time, again, before October 7th City Council meeting, to either construct, but more likely provide a financial guarantee for the construction of those two sidewalks. Should highlight, near top page six, and then moving on to the staff recommendations, again, staff does recommend approval, both preliminary plat and final plat, with four conditions. Now, they're beginning at the, near the top of the page here, association agreement. Applicant will be required to submit an association agreement prior to recording a final plat with Jackson County. And speaking with the applicant just before the meeting did confirm that this would just be remaining as one lot with rental units, not directly associated with the Brookwood Condos Homeowners Association. So therefore, since it is a one lot with rental units, much like an apartment building or a development, property owners association, or homeowners association, however you want to call it, per the code, again, confirming through City Attorney, would not be required. So again, that's kind of a boilerplate condition we, we put in with all residential subdivisions. So condition number one, staff will recommend that just be removed since it is essentially not applicable in this case. Again, if they came forward with condo units, and each unit was specifically parceled out, then that would be a different issue. But since that is not the case, and again, should they request to do that, they would have to go through essentially a replating process anyway, and then that property owners association could come forward at that time. But as it stands, as they're proposing it now, and the, the usage and, and function of that, of the project, condition number one, kind of long story short here, condition one, staff is recommending that be removed. So in essence, there'd be three conditions, conditions two through four. And with that, I'll stand for any other questions.
Are there any questions for the staff? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation?
Nothing to add at this time, thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicants? Okay. Thank you for being here. Bring it back up here for discussion. Need a motion on the preliminary plat, please.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wallace?
I'd like to make a motion for approval on preliminary plat, PP-8-13-4072, for Brookwood Village Town Homes, with conditions two through four.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Preliminary, the preliminary plat has been approved, and now the final plat.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Wallace?
I'd like to make a motion for approval for P, for the final plat, for PF-8-13-4067 for Brookwood Village Town Homes.
With the same three conditions?
With the same three conditions.
Thank you. I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The final plat will be sent to the council with our recommendation for approval. And that being said, we will now move on to any other business that we might have this evening. Mr. Allen, do you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and before I defer to Mr. Holly, a specific item for next week. The next Plan Commission meeting is two weeks from tonight, September 23rd. There'll be also the next Conference of Plans Steering Committee meeting at 5:00 beforehand. We hope to have a lot more information in terms of meeting dates and locations and such for these specific area plans that were discussed at last meeting. So boiled it down to three areas within the city. The map may look awkward, I don't have it with me, but all the areas we're looking at are on the west side of Highway 7, not intentional. But again, the idea is to kind of set a, up a kind of boilerplate process for reviewing kind of large-scale neighborhoods, not necessarily subdivisions, but groups of subdivisions that staff can use to kind of do specific area plans throughout the entire city as kind of a continuing action with the conference of plan and implementation of it. So working with a consultant over the last week or two, put together some kind of plan of attack for public meetings and invitations to residents, property owners, business owners, and we'll get some more information for that at the next Steering Committee meeting in two weeks. So with that, I, there's one other, not so much staff has, that I'll let Mr. Holly talk about.
Thank you. Tonight, granted, I won't touch that again. You've all been, you've all been handed out a flyer that looks, that looks like this. Again, this is the third technical assistant grant that the city has been awarded from EPA, and this one is being handled by Smart Growth America and Clarion Associates. The timing of it worked out really well. Probably one of the reasons that we were awarded this particular grant of technical assistance was because we're in the process, of course, of doing the comprehensive plan as well as the UDC update. So there was an opportunity to bring these folks in and have them talk about some sustainable development types of issues that we need to look at and certainly count on looking at through the comprehensive plan and through the UDC update. As part of that, they'll be holding a presentation, informational presentation, on September 19th, as you can see, from 5:30 to 7:00. That is a Thursday night, and Scott was, noticed that the Kansas City Chiefs played on that night as well, so we, we scheduled that purposely to try to get people in and out before the Chiefs game. There will be some snacks that are provided. The information, I think, we've seen the presentation, the PowerPoint presentation that's proposed to be given, and I think it's very informational. I think it's certainly interesting, and I hope that any of you who wish to attend, please do so. The following day, there's a workshop, and Chairman Billups has graciously accepted to be a part of that workshop. If there are any of you who are interested in being a part of that workshop, it is a, it pretty much will take the entire day on Friday, the 20th. But if you're interested, please let me know. We will definitely make room for you. But again, September 19th is a public meeting. Sure, the, the three issues that, that really we're going to focus on and what this technical assistance is focusing on is listed at the bottom of the flyer, of community health being one. It's a pretty broad issue, but he will discuss some of the key points of that, and alternative energy. That's following suit with what many communities within the metro have already done, looking at code language in particular that will support those wishing to look at alternative energy resources such as solar, wind, that sort of thing. And then, sustainable stormwater infrastructure, again, is another thing that you're hearing more and more about in the metro, and I'm sure we will continue to hear more about that, looking at some language that, that other communities have used to support that kind of a sustainable development option. There's any questions?
Any questions? Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? I'd like to remind everybody that this weekend is the Fall Fun Fest downtown, so please come down, support, support not only the people coming into town, but the local merchants. And everybody come down, have a good time. Hopefully, the weather will break before then. That being said, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.